Now, now, I got one follow-up. I got not follow-up.
Great follow-up. Totally response.
Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna go ahead and hit June 5th regular session meeting called Order. Please silence and shut off your cellphones if you would please, and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the press isn't here, but they're here via recording. That's what the camera over here is. Lake County Examiner. Melanie, are you up and running? Ready to go?
Yep.
Any, you wanna go over the additions or any additions to the...
Yeah, I'm sure. We are going to add an addition for our Sheriff Department purchase. We're going to delete the feature changes. Those were given consensus yesterday. And we are going to delete the co-plant, co-planting option. Because Jay was the people to make it.
Any other additions, deletions from the board? There being none. We'll start off on our very first thing is we'll open up the budget hearing. Our Budget Office has appeared, so officially we'll open the budget hearing at 10:02. Quick review, please, Anne.
The budget hearing allows the public to make comments on the budget committee's approved budget, which was forty-four million. The budget committee consists of these three commissioners: Chainland, Shuffield, Craig Foster, and John Jones. The budget was published in the Lake County Examiner, Anne, on our website in a summarized form, and it summarizes it in a couple of different ways. The first one shows the overall budget total and the revenues that support that. So for forty-four point six million dollars, the property taxes that support all those services is three point five. The rest is from beginning fund balances and carryover, federal and state dollars, and then service charges for services we provide. We also summarize it by expenditure. So of the forty-four million, we do not expend that total. We reserve for future expenditure about nineteen million. We spend, our budget is about eight million in personnel services, ten point five in materials and services, three million in capital projects, and then two million in inter-fund transfers to support projects and things like that. The last summary that is published in the paper or on our website is by organizational unit or program. So for general fund, it goes by each department, and then list FTE. And then special revenue funds by the total fund. So again, forty-four point six million, ninety-five FTE, and again, it goes spend about forty-four million. Spend about twenty-three of it, so.
Thank, thank you, Olivia.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you then. So we can take comments anytime here while the hearing is open. We'll leave the hearing open until later today, so if you have a comment now, you're welcome to make a comment on our budget, or anytime throughout the rest of the floor. And I don't see nobody jumping forward on the budget comment. So our, our next item, and we'll leave that hearing open, is public comment. And we accept public comment at this time on anything...
And here we are for public comment. We're late. We got a lot going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
But, A on this minute.
Yeah, thank you.
Public comment is allowed for anything that's not on the agenda. So at this time, we'll open up for public comment.
Okay.
And so, who would like to first?
I'm ready. Okay, my name is Janet Kittredge. I live in Fort Rock. And everybody's heard from me for many, many years. Now I'm here again, off the roads. Somebody's up here. I think that he's the guy from Lakeview where his ball's at. And he's doing an excellent job. We are finally getting the roads graded the way they should be. So, we've been on Kevin. Since Kevin came on in Rick's replacement. And I think that the guy from Lakeview, he absolutely knows what he's doing. He needs to train our guys. And a few of you have toured our roads with us and without us. And if we don't get him taken care of now, we're gonna have trouble this summer. So I've been on Kevin. He did Pitter Lane. Pitter Lane washed out on Sunday. I don't know if you guys came that way, and I don't know if he got back up until, but it needs to be taken care of. Maybe he's on. He did Pitter Lane from Conley Lane here, and then they did part Conley Lane. And I see he's working on Bowers, or he did Bowers. I didn't go down Bowers today. And then we're looking for them to get on Captain Lake, which he could be there today. But as we discussed, there's no reason why they can't do miles of, of roads in one day. And it looks like this guy's getting it done, so I'm very happy to see that happening. The other complaint we have, and I'm sure that you've heard about all this, is all the garbage and junk people accumulate on their properties. And one example is up here on Highway 31. It was a nice place. It's in Adairville. The guy retired, moved in, and there's just junk all over. And my neighbor, who's president of Fort Rock Historical Society, who I just met with, because we have a project going on there today, said, "Will you please bring that up with the commissioners? How can we get these places cleaned up and get on these people?" So I don't know if you guys ever cruised down 31, but you can see the mess right off, right off.
I know where you're talking.
Yeah. And there was one down here with a whole mobile. We did talk with the planning commission about that. What are they gonna do with it? They just parked it, and the stuff just blows all over. Going back to the roads, one other thing I forgot to mention. They came through the borrowed ditches last fall, and they piled up all the tumbleweeds, and they've done nothing with them, and now they're gonna blow on all our fields. And Kevin said they were gonna come, run the piles weather permitting, and nothing's been done with those. So we really don't wanna see that happen. Either leave them or take care of it.
Do you have no sprays on them, or...
No, there's no, no signs. I thought they weren't spraying anymore.
But on the road, pardon, sorry, road right away, you don't have a no spray or it can be sprayed?
Yeah, not on ours. I mean, we never, we never put signs up or anything. And then on the remedy issue again, you know, the backlading. The backlading is a big concern. We do not wanna see that happening.
There, there is no backlading.
Yeah. Well, they were backlading. Since I talked with you, some of these long backlading. But anyway, yeah, so, so I work with the L-Bravers too. And they just came through some of our roads recently, and you know, we, we visit with them, and they're like, they've never heard of backlading before. So we don't know that came from. Yeah, but thank you for getting on that, and we'll make sure we're watching them. And if we do see it flipped around, somebody's gonna hear from us.
There's no, no backlading going on. I think the original idea behind backlading started way back in the day was an idea to get the roads as smooth as possible in order to keep people from calling and complaining. So the idea was to hit it once you can go real fast with it, and go all the way up, come all the way back.
Yeah, hit it once for like one day.
Well, we don't know that, and that's why it doesn't go on.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you for addressing that. Thank you for the time.
All right, that, thank you. Other public comment? Mr. Todd.
Hi, I'm Bob Todd. I'm a junior in Fort Rock. My concern is the speeding through Fort Rock, particularly of hay trucks. They, it's just dangerous, and I want you guys to be aware of that. I know the sheriff's office and the deputies are busy, but perhaps something could be done. Because here in town, there's, there's just no place for a truck to go, right? They're gonna hit a building with people, and they try to avoid an accident through town here as well. And it's not fifty-five miles an hour or sixty, a lot of times seventy, eighty miles an hour. And I'm not sure what the answer is, but it certainly needs to be addressed.
I believe you have a very legitimate concern. We'll carry the message forward to the Sheriff's Department as an enforcement issue, and so we'll carry that forward to the Sheriff's Department to do some enforcement. If a truck loses control, go through your jacket and write it off. It's a common issue.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the sheriff's liaison, so I'll get a hold of you today.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Johnson, sir.
Ron Johnson, Kristin Stann. Comment I wanna make about speeding and traffic violations. The sheriffs have told me we're too busy to work traffic. My comment is, if you are between one criminal contact and a second and see a traffic violation, why can't you take ten minutes out of that day and write the ticket?
Harold, you have a comment?
Harold Miles, Fort Rock. I have a concern about the solar systems in roads. In the last couple of weeks, I've had people contacting me about rock to put on their roads in the solar systems. And if this is, if they're gonna put on the amount of rock that they're talking now to me, this will put about sixteen to hundred to two thousand loads on these roads. And with twenty fuck, hay trucks a day going out here, we're gonna tear these roads up. So why can't the county put some kind of a road tax on their solar system if they're gonna come in? I mean, between the gravel that they're gonna put down for roads and machinery and, and their supplies and setting the solar panels and the steel to hold them up, we're gonna tear these roads up or not? That was our big problem years ago before we paved these roads. Is people said, "Why should I come in here on gravel when I can run on pavement someplace else?" And hay, and these hay farms out here are paying an awful lot of taxes anymore. So I'd like to have you folks consider something. If they, this solar system that's going in here living beside Fort Rock, if they put that in, like I say, it'll put another sixteen hundred trucks on, or loads on the road. And we just heard the comments about speeding and everything. And these guys are gonna be contractors, so they're gonna be hauling as fast as they can. And so I think really we need to consider this. It's safety hazards and everything else, plus tearing our roads up.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. With that, we'll move on with our agenda, and thank you for those comments. We'll follow that on. I do have on my agenda, Chainland Shuffield. Is that not happening?
I just didn't text him.
Okay, so we'll skip past that one. We'll go right to budget resolutions. Anne, that would be, you take the lead on that. We have several today.
Yes. So in your packet are several budget resolutions for the fiscal year end currently. The first one is 2018 dash zero five. This is in the matter of the road reserve loan to the landfill due to our transfer of operations to the county. We have a lot of startup equipment that we needed to purchase. Kevin's here to talk about all the equipment that we did purchase. We did approve a loan last fall. We waited a little bit of time to make sure that that loan amount was going to be enough to handle all of the startup supplies and purchasing. So this resolution sets the loan amount for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. According to Oregon State law, it is paid back over, because it's an operating loan and a capital loan, it's paid back over ten years at the local government investment pool interest rate, which is two point seven five. Because this is the maximum amount of the loan, we will watch to see what the total purchases are, and also what the landfill plan can afford on its own, and then loan that amount. If we were to loan six hundred and fifty thousand, the payments will be seventy-five thousand two hundred and thirty dollars a year. And we budget that, so it will be shown in the budget every single year and paid off in ten years.
Thank you. And we'll do these individually, so I'll make a motion in the matter of road reserve loans to landfill. Approved Resolution Number 2018 dash zero five. Loan amount up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Such as that motion? Motion's been made. Seconded. Further discussion? All payers say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next one, Andrew.
Next one is Resolution Number 2018 dash thirteen. This is in the matter of contingency transfer in general fund. Our Assessors Department ended up the year with financial and services expenditures than they had planned due to legacy software support payments. Also, increased travel now with training new staff, they had more travel costs than they anticipated, and also foreclosure advertising costs. Because he did not have any savings in his personnel services, and I also didn't want to involve another manager to transfer appropriations between managers and departments and categories, this is going to be a contingency hit to general fund. So this resolution increases the Assessors Department Materials and Services six thousand dollars and decreases the general fund contingency six thousand dollars. The nice thing is, like we talked about yesterday, this is the only general fund contingency impact that I know of. For this fiscal year, we actually did some very accurate budgeting, and people were able to adjust within their own budgets for the most part, other than this current.
So I'll make a motion to accept the general fund transfer 2018 dash thirteen. What was the amount?
Six thousand.
Six thousand dollars. For six thousand dollars. I'll second that one. Motion's been made and seconded to accept Resolution Number 2018 dash thirteen in the matter of contingency transfer of six thousand dollars. Further discussion? All payers say aye. Aye. Chair votes aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next one.
Resolution Number 2018 dash thirteen is in the matter of incorporation transfer. This is actually for my department. I am now taking the county insurance and have not budgeted for that. But I do have savings in my materials and services to cover the increase in personnel services. The savings came from a couple of different things. We had purchased an addition to our software for reporting features that finally got paid off, and we didn't realize it was on that payoff plan, so we saved money there. And then also some of my dues and refund interest expense, also mileage savings. So this resolution increases personnel services by seventeen hundred dollars and decreases my materials and services by seventeen hundred.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to accept the Resolution Number 2018 dash fourteen.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept Resolution Number 2018 dash fourteen in the amount of seventeen hundred dollars within the same fund, which is category change. Any further discussion? All payers say aye. Aye. Chair votes aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have another one.
Resolution Number 2018 dash fifteen again is in the matter of the corporations transfer. This is for our new Lakeview Law Enforcement Contract Fund. Again, we started hiring people a little bit later than we anticipated. So we had personnel services savings there, but had more startup supply purchases than we'd anticipated also. So this resolution increases materials and services by thirty-five thousand and decreases personnel services by thirty-five thousand. Overall expenditure total stays the same.
I make a motion to make the transfer of twenty, uh, 2018 dash fifteen of thirty-five thousand on the Sheriff's Department.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Resolution Number 2018 dash fifteen in the matter of appropriations transfer of the amount being thirty-five thousand dollars. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Chair votes aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Last one. 2018 dash sixteen is in the matter of unanticipated revenue. This is for the Camden Grant. This is a state-funded program for child abuse multidisciplinary investigation teams. This is a timing issue. We are reimbursed for services and expenditures that we incur. So we need to pay five quarters worth of our Clanton Lake Cares contract for these investigative services and training services and things like that. And we only get reimbursed for four quarters. We'll get reimbursed soon, but we need to increase the revenue and increase the expenditure to handle all of the timing issues. This increases state resources seven thousand and increases materials and services seven thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution Number 2018 dash sixteen to increase the Camden State Resources seven thousand dollars and Materials and Services increases seven thousand dollars.
One more second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept Resolution 2018 dash sixteen in the matter of unanticipated revenue, that amount being seven thousand dollars. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Chair votes aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anne, thank you very much. That, that's really not that many resolutions for into the fiscal year. Like you said earlier, people have done a good job staying within their budgets and stuff. And most of those are from category equipment, same thing. So thank you very much. OHA Amendment for Public Health Services is next. And Public Health is not here. Obviously, we come across that now, but all their stuff comes through us as a public health authority. And this is the Eleventh Amendment to the Oregon Health Authority, 2017-19, under a governmental agreement. This is a positive impact of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. And Melanie, did you give any more overview than you were...
It's just an increase in re-adapted health services for this fiscal year. That goes up and down, that's what I'm excited to hear.
So, we'll take it.
You reviewed it, Mr. Bailey.
Looks good, Mr. Bailey.
Yes, I have, as you can see just by the title, it's the Eleventh Amendment. We get these all tied. This is just a minor change, so.
Any more?
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment to the OHA agreement. The issue of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Seconded to accept Agreement Number 154118. Fiscal impact of the positive impact of the agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Chair votes aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, VFW flags. This is a very good thing. We had a request for flags to, Costa Flags to be put out there in certain events. James, were you able to follow up on any of the...
Uh, no, I can deal with George Middleton yesterday. But basically, this is for twenty-five dollars per flag. They're looking to put up two flags on E Street in Lakeview and two flags on F Street in Lakeview in the sum of a hundred dollars. And we were talking at twenty-five dollars per flag. It would be nice to see that happen in other places in the county, Silver Lake, Fort Rock, and kind of update some of the flags and make sure that they're kept in good condition. And so I was going to get in touch with George Middleton and see if we could get a few of those placed in different places.
Yeah, it's a request from VFW. They were wanting to put the flag down.
So it's pretty awesome that, you know, that they, they're here. Just gonna follow up and see if you can do it in other places as well.
So obviously, this is something that's hard to support. I think the option is to go ahead and approve this cost, and if you find out that it may be appreciated for the community, then we just...
Absolutely. We'll do that.
Do you have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the hundred dollar cost and purchase of four flags. To distribute it in different locations and respect the location.
One second. Motion's been made and seconded to, upon the request of one hundred dollars from the VFWs presented by, further discussion? I think we already had a further discussion.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Fund that we generally probably take that out of the, the million lottery dollars are within the commissioner's budget itself. I'm quite a bit on your own line, travel and stuff. I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Yeah. I've always just liked to have a little discussion before we make a motion anyway, so this sometimes makes things simpler.
Okay. So I see Mr. Shuffield walked in. You're on our agenda. Do you need a little time before we get to you, or are you ready to go?
I think I'm ready to go. We have some other members coming, so. If there is an opportunity to give me ten minutes for the others to come and join us, okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
So our next item is upped in sheriff's vehicles. Action consideration. Melanie.
Uh, yeah, so, sorry, I have the two quotes that Paul received and the substantial information through the solicitation process. Uh, the best, so Dave Wyler listed me all the specifications he required, so he's not that bad, and he recommends going with Lear.
So by the specs that was put out by undersherer Paul, Dave Wyler was able to...
No, they...
Set out the same Lear was...
They provided sixty-eight of the seventy-nine specs.
And Lear fulfilled all of them. So even though Dave Wyler says a little bit less, they did fulfill the... So we're entertaining motion.
I would make a motion to be accepted.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to take the recommendation to have a bidding done by Lear. The cost being, let me get to it here.
Three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Two, per vehicle is twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion proposed. I just didn't have the ears. I had...
You just include it by days.
Yeah. The church behind the illusion.
Yeah. I think actually the full sum is on the table, aren't there?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you both twice. That one's close, two, two hundred fifty.
Oh, yeah, it's a little...
ODOT Agreement Number 33491. Melanie, that is you, Special Protection Issue.
Lake County Services is a qualified committee for ODOT, and we provide services that are contracted through local agencies. This agreement is for state operating services in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars for the next year. And then we'll have a federal agreement to come in soon once that's been finalized.
Okay, so we're entertaining motion. I'll make a motion to accept the ODOT Agreement Number 33491 for fiscal impact of the three-five four hundred.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Agreement Number 33491. Total amount being two thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars for the funding. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Chair votes aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we have meeting minutes is the next thing we have. We have meeting minutes is the next thing we have. Work session and meeting session five fourteen. That was combined, section correct. So we're gonna take a motion. Are there any corrections?
I have no corrections or additions to the minutes. I would make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
One second. Motion's been made in seconded to accept amendments of five fourteen, twenty nineteen as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, opposed, motion carries. Sheriff's purchase for the Towns Lakeview, this is a vehicle purchase as we went into contact with Towns Lakeview. That fund is completely separate, so these are two vehicles to be purchased through that fund. Melanie, you got a little view on that?
Yeah, I sure do. We sent, I'm sure Paul sent out three bids and received three back. Homeowner Company was the lowest vendor, lowest bidder we could see from the vendors. And I recognize one of the Homeowner Company in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and six dollars for two S S D vehicles.
I need-
Do you need a copy?
Yeah.
Mine, yeah. Right there. Thirty-two thousand nine hundred and six dollars per vehicle.
And so this, what did you do, motion? I'll make a motion to accept Homeowner Company's bid for thirty-two thousand nine hundred and six dollars per vehicle for the sheriff's.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made in seconded to accept the lowest vote. We got two vehicles at thirty-three thousand nine hundred and six dollars. Nine hundred and six dollars. Further discussion?
Just to clarify, this is coming out of the Towns dollars with the contract, it's a separate fund.
Thank you for the evidence. And to the further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, opposed, motion carries. Back over here, so-
Actually, did I request the chair?
Yeah.
For the rest room?
Absolutely, so we did. At the, at the, yes, Mr. Williams, we were making fire in the fridge.
I would appreciate that very much, sir.
It's a good time. We'll take fire.
You wanna go up there and juice myself? I think a lot of people get stoned, use themselves as far as some of them. Just me.